Over there in front of him. She's like, do you want to pull the button up? Sure, but I don't know how, I'm not going to change it, someone else is going to have to do it.
Is Alan going to be here?
Well, it's a drop for Westwood. Or if you live in both, I can't imagine driving how it would work. And, and those guys might talk to other people, their friends that are going to do it again. Say, hey, when we talk to whoever, my friend, I don't know, make sure some favorite.
Don't touch anything, okay?
Which paragraph? This one or this one?
I cruise right, and I, I cruise. You should never have me cruise through this stuff, you know better. Absolutely. She left Arizona, yeah, that's right, over the weekend or something. Cause I saw her car in the driveway, I was walking the dog. Why? It's that, we're blaming that on him! He typed it! Who typed it?
She had me cruise it.
Who typed it? Who typed it?
Not many.
It's one of those, your, your brain's telling you what it should say.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, there's certain points, that's why I.
I love, I read everything with such added regard.
I'm glad to get you, keep it in snacks.
I know nothing.
She goes, that's what worries me. She goes, that's what worries me, trying to say that.
You know how many times I've been, oh my god, Steven.
Well, Silicon Valley, the data's different. Do you have bean bags and stuff they can sit in?
You're really tripping.
See, it's playing a pretty sad, don't lay it down, I forget. Last thing, McCullough said he was leaving and told me, I said, you know, if the department has an 10% off their budget, Hawkins goes, I'll stop them all from coming in, do I just keep the money?
What was it?
Yeah, oh, oh, that's real, that's, yes, but.
No, because there's things in the board that suck, you know, we already have the process.
All right, you have one question, ask the dean, and they got an answer, so I'm good. Okay, well, just being dealt with that. No, all the roof, the roof of the police department's been assessed, there's, like, there's reality and there's not. But, I understand, I'm just being dealt with that. I don't like to say to you either, but it's better than giving them nothing.
Mr. Mayor, approach on seven one. I'm waiting for the board to tell me it's good to go, Mayor. Are we good, or what are we doing here? No, you're sitting right here, you're gonna do this. Can we go ahead and start the study session?
Recording in progress.
Okay. There we go. Give me one. Trying to wait for something to load here, but we can get started, I believe. Okay, so we'll start the study session off with the mayor's budget. We can make this, start with any questions from the council, or any statements from the administrator, anybody?
Nope. I've talked to every single one except Mr. Cavallana today, so.
Sorry, Dean.
That's all right.
Okay, so, we got any questions from the council that we need answered?
I do have one question, Rick. And, you know, I did talk to Kevin Sargent about this, there's, it looks like there's a pole barn, that's in the budget for this year. And, it's not really more, Kevin explained why we need the, why we need the pole barn. But, we seem to keep adding ancillary buildings over at public services. And again, I know, Dean, we're looking at a more comprehensive plan possibly for, for our buildings, not just DPS, but across the board. And, I guess I would, I would prefer that, in the future, we look at that whole property. And, it's, I just feel like putting a pole barn there, and then possibly tearing it down, a couple of years later, if we're gonna build, if it's an opportunity to build a new complex for DPS, I don't know, maybe that's not in the cards. But, I wanna make sure that we're absolutely certain that that pole barn's gonna be there for, you know, several years, not just a couple of years, if you know what I mean.
You want me to address that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, the, the pole barn is, this is my opinion, it, it's needed regardless of what we do, building-wise. It's, you know, we gotta get the buildings, or the vehicles, out of the weather, inside, and we have the opportunity to build onto a classroom training area. That would also, in the event we do, are able to do major renovation, or even a rebuilding of the DPW area. It would allow us to have a place where we could put the staff and get the other functions, cause we really don't have where we can transfer them and, and make it, make it all work. In the building assessment, and I know we're gonna spend time on this Monday, but I believe off the top of my head, there is about $2.9 million suggested for renovation to the DPW area building. If council decided to go down the road of throwing that a complete rebuild, that would be probably a, a financial commitment of about nine million total. And I'm not, I'm not saying it's this value, that value, or whatever, but in most of the stuff we look at, we would still have a use for the pole barn. And, the other part of this too, is, this, this pole barn has been in the budget for at least the last three, if not four years. So, I, I really think it's, it's, it's gonna be necessary, no matter what we do, even if we came down and said, all right, bulldoze everything there, and we're gonna start from new. It's not, it's unlikely we would be able to get off of that property, there aren't a lot of other opportunities, and especially if potentially you're competing with finding the space for a, a police, or fire, or whatever. Really dwindles the properties that are available, and then you tell DPW we gotta find another, I don't know what the site is, ten acre site, Kevin? Probably ten acre site around there, so it would, it would present challenges. So, I, I appreciate the, the comment, but it, it really, it really is a, a good investment. We have the ability to fund it through the water fund, get our ungodly expensive vehicles in, inside. And, I think it's gonna provide a more longevity and everything there. So, it, we're definitely, definitely cognizant of how the whole big picture may come together, but we would probably be remiss if we didn't budget and plan for it, because there's all those other unknowns.
Yeah, I understand, I just, you know, I, I wouldn't, I would hate to, yeah, so on one side, you need it, cause vehicles, especially, you know, two, three, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar vehicles, they need to go inside the building. It's like, they can't be, it's not good for them to sit outside. On the flip side, I'd just hate to see, like, a couple of years down the road, and it's like, well, this isn't gonna work for, you know, and that's, that was my, my concern, yeah. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Council member?
Me? Okay. No, this isn't really in this budget, but just food for thought, I was talking, we were talking to Chief Hawkins earlier, and I know he's probably not prepared to talk about this, but he brought up a good point about cameras for our community. And, I'd like if, if you could just maybe touch on it a little bit, Chief, and give us some idea about that, because this is something that I feel strong about for our community, and I know that you mentioned it, it's worth listening to for a second.
Yeah, well, I, I didn't have it necessarily in this budget, it is something that we are looking at, at the police department, to put cameras up to protect our facilities, we will be looking at grants, we'll be looking at other opportunities. We do have in our police budget, some infrastructure for inside and outside cameras at the police station, and that would start that project, and then we could go from there. But as we look forward, I think it would be nice for us to budget, and maybe we look collaboratively to see if we can put a project together to make sure our resources at least are protected. But I do have infrastructure in mind, in the budget, to do the inside and outside of the police station, which will be able to house that.
And you're talking future cameras though?
Yes, to add on to that, yep.
In our community, on the streets, downtown, on West Road, so you can see what's going on, the buildings, if any buildings were targeted, or whatever.
Yeah, that would be the goal in the future, and, and we'd have a whole proposal, when that time comes, for everybody to look at, and see if it's something they wanted to get on board with.
Yeah, it's just something to look at for the future, maybe not in, you know, right away in this budget, but coming up. It's a good, a really good idea, and I, you know, I hadn't thought about that until you mentioned it, so, that's great, great idea.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, then I guess we move to the next step. So.
You wanna go department by department and ask them, or? What do you wanna do?
Them? We can't.
It's up to you.
Is there any department heads that would like to speak on our budget, or things maybe that may or may not have been in there, that they really think they need, or want, or?
Want me to go through the highlights?
If we got no more questions, sure, just go through where it's going, and.
We wanna get our fifty bucks out of the council members for coming here tonight. Department heads unfortunately are here for free, so.
You're scratching it out, not me.
Yeah, I just, just to cover a few things, cause I did entertain questions from six of the council people today. I didn't have time to articulate them in an email and send them back out, so everybody had the questions. But, like the mayor said, the budget is submitted, is balanced, I think it's pretty, pretty, pretty solid in all the areas that we've stressed. If you reference the budget highlights and information page, you know, we're doing some stuff with the parks and facilities, they're moving along. Police department, one of the changes you'll see in their budget, is the final transition over to the enterprise agreement with vehicles. If you look at the bottom line of any of the budget areas, you'll, you know, the pension costs will jump out, or whatever. But, this, these numbers are exactly in line with what was discussed last year, and they're tied to the Act 345 mill inch, as most of you should be aware. Fire department, we did a increase in their vehicle replacement fund, because the fire trucks are getting incredibly expensive. But, Chief Anderson has done a good job of planning out the fleet replacement, and how it's all gonna come together. All the vehicles in the budget have challenges with getting delivery on any type of reasonable notice, to be honest with you. Building department, there's really not much new in there, but the adjustments in the budget are related to probably a fifteen percent reduction in business, as far as what we handled for Gibraltar. So far, I think shedding the Gibraltar work, for lack of a better term, has actually improved and enhanced the service that's given to the Trenton residents. So, DPS, they have a couple of equipment purchases, which will come to pass. I thought the department heads did a good job of sharing the cost of one of the pieces of equipment, a skid steer, I think it's between recreation, DPS, and water, maybe? Kevin? Yeah. So I thought that was pretty creative, and it wasn't an idea I came up with, they brought it, and did a great job with it. A skid steer is like, you know, those little mini excavators, like a Bobcat? Same type of thing. And we got the opportunity to add a variety of attachments at some point, for all the times we would normally go out and rent equipment, or have to even sub stuff, some stuff out, so, should be all good. Engineering will continue to go along the same route we have, with C Rain's been very happy with that, we actually get rapid response, there's been no issues as far as getting accurate pertinent information. There's been no issues as far as getting accurate pertinent information and the quality of the work and stuff I'm very, very happy with. Recycling, I did have some questions today about the recycling. Recycling's gonna continue. We...we have looked at enhancing the recycling a little bit. We don't see really a very feasible alternative or way to get door-side recycling to multifamily units, you know, apartment buildings, condominiums and stuff. There's tremendous issues. The way it would be attached to their water bill, how they would get their senior discount, if we can actually get into the site because we don't service all of the...all the locations with our commercial trash. We don't have total control over that. And then there's also the space issue of where we can put the recycling bins. And it's very problematic. And but one of the workarounds so that we have 24-hour recycling opportunities for those people that the 10% of the population doesn't have to the door would be putting a couple of new recycle dumpsters on current city property that people would be able to, at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the evening, drive by and dump their recyclables off. So we're trying to work through that. We gotta make sure it's functional and that we can still collect it and get it to the recycling. We don't wanna end up like nearby community that ended up finding out their stuff was taken to the landfill. So...but it's a work in progress. Also, if you remember, when we did the budget for recycling, it...it should be, and we're working hard, and I'm very optimistic that it's gonna maintain the current rate structure, and it will be self-sustaining as far as equipment investment. Everything that was all built into the budget you guys originally approved two years ago, two...almost two years ago. Nothing big with...well, we'll have more to talk about with sanitation and stuff. But recreation, the pool and everything, you guys are all pretty much clued into. We do have building and facility challenges and whatever. We'll be discussing next week. Central office and equipment and supplies. It's just the...it's relatively the same cost, everything going out the door. I mean, there's a small savings, but hopefully we end up with new high-quality equipment that serves the employees in the various buildings better. We're working through some challenges with that, though. Miscellaneous, DDA was kind enough to take on the $50,000 sponsorship for fireworks. We'll also...we're also looking at, we'll be rolling out a sponsorship plan that will maybe offset their costs or whatever. But that support is appreciated because it, you know, gets it off the...the general fund, which is welcome relief. Kennedy Ice Arena, you know about the overhaul and everything that's going on there. And library, one of the changes there is Ms. Jensen is gonna be able to add a part-time outreach person. It's kind of a work in progress, and hopefully it's gonna improve the outreach mainly to the other participants in the library. And it'll hopefully free up some of her...some of her time and some of the other people's time, and we'll...we'll see where it goes. I think it's all a good thing. Library Board was very much in favor of it, and it's a...it's a good stepping stone to continuous improvement. DDA...DDA Director, we do have starting April 8th. So that's exciting as far as the DDA is concerned. They still have projects going on. I did get notified that the Elm Street parking maybe is...may be ready to put shovels in the ground by late May, so...
Who the farmer's market be?
I don't know. Your front yard available? No. I don't know. What we've done in the past is we just relocated for that period of time. It looks like about a six-week construction period. But we'll see. And then water rate increase, 4.8%. Included in your packet also went over where we are in comparison. So, I mean, nobody likes increases. But one of the things, like, we have a project planned for...it's been on the books, planning, and it's about 90% done with the engineering and planning. But this one water line that has been needed for 15 years is about a $6.5 million project. And we've been trying to get grant funding and all this other revolving water fund and whatever stuff. But there are times when, you know, we're...we're taking a 3.3% increase from Great Lakes water, and we have to have a margin in there that allows us to do and keep the system up and going. And if you notice in your chart that has the other neighboring jurisdictions or cities that we're still in the bottom three as far as rates. And that's those...that chart was also built assuming no rate increases for any of the other communities, which I guarantee that's gonna be not the case. They're...they have to raise their rates because they're gonna have to write a bigger check to GLA. So that's just a brief overview. I think I touched on almost every question that was asked today. And hopefully I clarified everything. Oh, I did have...there was one question brought up about the water and sewer funding. And there's a...about a, you know, it's...it looks like it's a great thing that there's, you know, $600,000 decrease in the expense. But that is due to the...the CSO project and the money that has come in. That's supplemental money, so we can't...we...we have to...we have to use those funds before we can acquire new funds. And even after this year's payback or paid or used, there'll be about a $100,000 cushion still in there. So it's a good thing, you know? Everything is on time on...on budget as much as it can be, so...
Sir?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Nelson?
Dean, did you wanna touch on the question I asked? Are we okay not to talk about that?
I don't remember which one you asked. I fielded a lot today.
I thought mine would be the more important one, but... Apparently not. It was in regards to future proofing purchases as like a special fund.
Oh, oh, yeah. Councilman Prusy was asking about, you know, where's the money for...for future purchase...purchases and...and the planning? And so like, if you look at fire budget, which, of course, I'm the most familiar with as far as the areas of the budget. But we started that, I don't know, five or six years ago, maybe? Maybe more? For machinery and equipment replacement fund because the fire trucks are so expensive. So we do, we put money away, and it's earmarked or it's not a true encumbrance, but it...it's earmarked or planned for that specific purchase. The police have kinda moved in that same direction with their replacement plan through the rental agreement or the lease agreements and everything so that, you know, that $200,000 a year or whatever, 240? 200...200 and some. That will be probably a very consistent number. And we're hoping it's gonna decrease actually at different times or whatever. But instead of coming before council and going every other year for three patrol cars that are $60,000 apiece or whatever, we wanna get to that consistent level. So that is part of the budget, and you should expect that to...to be a continuing part of the budget, although there will be fluctuations. And, of course, there'll be times it'll be a little more, and there'll be times, hopefully, it'll be a little less depending on the different acquisitions or whatever throughout the year. So...and we do have monies, like for refuse collection, that are set aside in... if you...it's kind of a dirty word, earmarking, but it... some of those funds are specified in your fund balance, or they're earmarked for not usually a specific item, but a genre or an area of...that it would be spent on. We also have some...a small amount of building money, I believe, also. But that...that's where...and, all right, I'll go into fund balance just briefly. But that's where you get the $9 million that's available in fund balance. And then roughly $6 million of that is what we call restricted. And then there's, I don't know, 3.7 or something that is unencumbered or available. So we're...we're doing a good job of staying in with...well, within the accounting standards. Out of that restricted money, that money is earmarked or planned for a variety of different things. But it doesn't mean all of it has to stay there. We have...I shouldn't say "we." Y'all have the ability to reallocate those funds if...if need be for different things. Doesn't mean, of course, we can do a spend-for-all because there...there will be a price to pay on the back end. But that's what it means with the...the fund balance. Those are, you know, rollovers from...generally, they're rollovers or savings that have occurred from years past and built up over time. I don't know where we'll stand at the end of this year. We're usually in the 2% to 3% range. Jill? Yeah, 2% to 3% range, I think. And I think that will probably be falsely better this year, but that's because we have probably $350,000 of unexpected revenue from the permitting process with the DTE demolition. So, you know, when August floats around and Jill comes up with whatever number we added to our fund balance, just kinda keep in mind, don't set the bar too high for next year because that was a one-time-only gain. Another...another thing that can throw that off, too, is when we...when or if we transfer property or get something out from underneath us that we have income that we didn't plan for, didn't budget for. So that would also go in there generally unrestricted. Does that work?
Work.
Getting my 50 bucks worth. No, I'm kidding. Well, the mayor gets 70.
Anybody else?
I'm rich.
Any questions? Okay, so we're gonna do a straw poll just to see if we need to continue this on because I know we scheduled for...let me look, I wrote about the beginning. We talked about the 10th, right? 'Cause the 8th is your building assessment.
8th and 10th, I'd like to spend on buildings.
Right. And then after the 15th is gonna be this if we needed it and the building assessment, correct? So if we can get a straw poll to see if the budget's gonna pass, we can't really change the date that we'll vote on it because the public hearing's already been set. But as we go around the room, we will start with me, and I'm good with it. And you can say you're not yet, and we can pick in more times to meet and go through stuff. But it seems like everybody has got their questions answered to the best of our ability here. So let's start with the newest councilperson. That's what they did to me, sorry. Bill got me.
Yeah, I read through all of it. I don't have any additional questions. You and Dean answered all of my questions. I think it looks really good.
Okay. Let's keep round, moving down the road.
Because it was your budget.
It was mine. Theirs. I had nothing to do with this.
As long as you vote yes on it in the regular meeting, that's fine. You can hate this part of it.
Okay, all right. As far as that goes, it's favorable, I support it.
Okay.
Fonzie, I'm all in.
Timber?
Yep.
Dora?
Yeah, I mean, I...I went through everything line by line. I spoke to Dean a few times today. We all know I like to ask a million questions. I like it.
Okay.
That's a yes for me, if we were to do a straw.
Awesome. Well, with that being done, Mr. Mayor, is there anything you'd like to add, or...
No, outside of this is my favorite meeting every year because I don't have to run it. And so I'm almost sad to see it come to an end. But, yeah, great job, Rick. Thanks for making it seamless, so...
Sure, well, you guys gave us something that wasn't hard to get through, so...
Well, yeah, thank you, guys, for putting it together so well, you know? And our department heads, 'cause I know they beat their heads to the ground for it. So I think it's great.
Just wanna let them know that Monday, they'll...I'll do a presentation.
Go ahead.
Just a reminder that Monday meeting then will focus on buildings. I mean, if you have any other budget questions in between now and then, it's not a problem. I prefer email just so I can give you the answer to everybody. But...and then Monday, I really wanna push to stay on a rapid schedule and get the information to you guys so you can pick and decide your direction of...of what you wanna...what you wanna do or whatever. So I'll start it out by having a presentation, and then we'll go from there. But I would really count on we will still need Monday and...and Wednesday of your time. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Dean. With that being said, is there any public comment? I don't see anybody on here. I can see...which one? Here? Nope. Any public comment from the audience? If seeing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:32.